Glad you came.
That Freddie?
Mm-hmm.
Logan?
Sure.
Okay. Good evening. I'd like to call the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, October 15th, 2024 to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
No, sir.
Seeing none, I'll move the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and second on the agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, we have the agenda. First item up this evening's are under presentation, proclamations, acknowledgements is 3A, celebrating manufacturing month in Minnesota. And who's presenting on this? Is it Eric? Or you got it, Adam?
Packet. Nothing to present this evening, Mayor, other than it's a recognition of manufacturing week here in Minnesota as recognized through the state of Minnesota. Many cities throughout the state do a proclamation just to acknowledge the role that manufacturing plays in our economy. Attached and in the packet for you is that proclamation if you would care to read it and proclaim it.
All ready? I think we had a couple of local manufacturings in particular we wanted to call out. Is Flint Hills actually considered a manufacturing because they're, is that a little different manufacturing?
I think the definition can be quite broad and I would certainly recognize.
Well, certainly our largest taxpayer in the community is, is there also, we had a recent expansion by Frana and then also by Spectral Alloys, significant dollars back into the community. So with that, we'll move forward with the proclamation, kind of round robin here with the rest of the council. 2024 proclamation for October being manufacturing month, whereas the manufacturing industry is a critically important part of Minnesota's diverse and diverse economy and whereas manufacturing.
You were supposed to read the orange stuff.
I'm supposed to read the orange stuff. Who's got the first one?
I got the first one.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Ditto. Whereas the manufacturing industry is critically important part of Minnesota's diverse economy.
And whereas manufacturing contributed $57.2 billion to Minnesota's economy in 2023, representing 12% of the state's gross domestic product and?
And whereas manufactured exports brought 222.5 billion into the Minnesota economy in 2023 and?
Whereas workers took home 25.7 billion in wages from Minnesota manufacturing jobs in 2023, the second largest total payroll among private sector industries and?
Whereas manufacturing in Minnesota pays an average annual wage of $79,000, which is 10% higher than the state's overall average private sector wage and?
Whereas manufacturing provides more than 325,800 highly skilled, well-paying jobs, which significantly contribute to Minnesota's high standard of living and economic vitality.
And whereas Minnesota added about 2,000 net new manufacturing jobs over the year from 2022 to 2023 and?
Whereas Minnesota expects more than 93,000 job openings for manufacturing production positions alone through 2032 and?
Whereas there are roughly 8,625 manufacturing companies in Minnesota, making a wide range of products that improve life, create solutions, and bring joy here in Minnesota and around the world.
Now and therefore I, Jeffrey Weisensel, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 shall be observed as manufacturing month in Rosemount, Minnesota. And with that proclamation, that'll complete item 3A, and we'll go ahead and move to 3B, special event update, the Haunted Woods Trail.
I could take that quick, Mayor, then maybe I could pass it to Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Fresky, who is our, our workhorse on the Haunted Woods Trail. But it's standing in for Mr. Schultz tonight, but we're really excited for the, for the Haunted Woods Trail coming up on October 26th from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. We're set again for the park and ride with MBTA, and so folks are able to jump on a bus at Rosemont High School and then get a safe ride, free ride, straight down to the grounds, so there's a fight parking. But with that, Ms. Fresky, I turn it to you.
Yeah, I would just add that we do have a new website this year. It's rosemounthauntedtrail.org where you can find a whole bunch of information. We do have a couple vendor slots available and really what that requires, it's free, it's no charge, you just have to bring approximately 4,000 pieces of candy to hand out to kiddos.
That's it, yeah.
That's free.
That's, that's an investment.
That's great.
But we do have a couple spots open and we're accepting applications until the end of this week. So otherwise, we look forward to it.
Great.
Any other questions or comments from the rest of the council? Not, look forward for everyone coming out to this fantastic community event, and we'll have good weather too, we expect. That completes item 3B. Move up to item four, response to public comment. Believe this evening we have a response to, response to last meeting's resident comments.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I can take a stab at this and then Mr. Edgar is here and he can help as well too. And if folks saw the comments from the last meeting, we had a couple residents from the Harmony Villas neighborhood just expressing some frustration with kind of how the overall development process went for them as buyers, what they experienced from kind of the product that they received from, from a builder who has now, you know, kind of left the, the building marketplace and the frustration of kind of having a, a builder that kind of abandoned a, a development unfortunately, and some comments on kind of how the city had stepped in to assist them as best we could really get that development over the finish line. And, and I don't think it's of any value tonight to kind of litigate, you know, the back and forth of that. We've had communication with them for years and will continue to do so. You know, we as a city staff feel like we've stepped up quite a bit to assist that development, both in providing them financing if, if they, if they had chosen to utilize it. City staff labor at no charge to plant some trees, reducing the tree, the trees expected for the overall development. And then, you know, doing our best with them as they've kind of, like I said, pick up the pieces from really a, a development that struggled to, to get over the finish line. And so, and just more broadly speaking, perhaps maybe just to kind of react or share perspective on the city's limited ability to, you know, kind of guarantee the product that's going to be received in a residential development. We certainly have building codes and building standards, building inspectors that go out and do that work. But things like, you know, a basement that may be, you know, smelling musty due to a grading issue is a thing that's so granular as we approve, you know, hundreds of homes and inspect hundreds of homes per year. There's obviously chances that those things can occur in, in a community. And, and so it's just the whether or not, you know, the city has got, you know, a direct purview and some of those analyses and things of that nature. Some of the things that we'll continue to talk with them on, you know, some streetlight issues if they feel as though they're missing a couple of streetlights. These are private infrastructure, private streetlights, and so we'll continue to talk with them on that. And then they've got some as-built surveys that they're looking to get produced and return to them, that we are holding funds for that, provided by the developer. And so we're in process right now of getting those as-built surveys developed and created, completed, and then of course given back to every homeowner so they have those in their personal file and the city file as to how the properties were, were built from a, from a grading and, and overall completion standard. So I think that's all that I really wanted to share. Nick, anything you want to expand on, or does that kind of cover what we had discussed?
Oh, I think you're, you covered it well, Logan.
Okay, yeah, we can chat more if you have any questions, Mayor.
I'll open it up to council if there's any follow-up. Commissioner?
Yeah.
Or Councilmember Tyson.
So, so I appreciate that because it was one of the things that, obviously at the last meeting, you could tell that this, this, this neighborhood was definitely affected by not only this particular contractor and then the, the lack of having this contractor finish his requirements. Is there any kind of state law that, that applies here, or, you know, is it, I mean, he's no longer in business though, right? Is that my understanding?
Yep, yep.
So, I mean, it's, it sounds like the, the staff has gone above and beyond. It sounds like you guys put a lot of time and a lot of hours from your team, Nick. Is that, would that be, would that be fair?
It is, yes.
For like, how many years have you been working with this to try to make this right? And, and I'm just saying that because it was one of those things that you could tell that the residents are still frustrated and rightfully so. It's, it's a difficult situation. But it sounds like you and your staff have put many hours in this. Is that true?
It is accurate. I can't put a number on that per se. I think we've just kind of rolled with it and done what we've had to do. I personally have been working on it for over a year, off and on, to kind of quarterback the resolution and getting the, the right pieces put together to make things happen. But I know there were a lot of communications and back and forth prior to that. Logan can attest to that from his years here, and I think some of our other staff could as well. So, you know, never, never had any intentions of letting things go, but had to make the best of the situation, which was quite complicated and, and pretty difficult with what we were left to deal with.
Well, and just looking at some of the things that we did, we're talking about, you know, resetting the tree requirements, helping out with manual labor and installing a bunch of the landscaping, the planning and management assistance that not only that the engineers within your department, I believe, helped out with, paying for certain blueprints and plans. It seems like the city's really tried to do the most that we can within their purview of what we represent. Is that fair to say?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, like you had mentioned, Councilmember Tyson, you know, we really, you know, to help them out as the developer abandoned them, for lack of a better term, we really turned a private project into a public project. So Nick and his team managed the project and implemented it. And the good news of it all is if you drive through the neighborhood now, it, it's, it's, in my opinion, a beautiful neighborhood. It's got a perfectly completed road.
Looks finished, yeah.
Looks great. There's, there, there may be some grading issues, and I'm not meaning to, to, to comment on any specific homeowner's concerns with his or her property. But the road's finally completed, trees are in, stop, you know, signal, or excuse me, streetlights are in to, to a large extent. So we got there. It just took longer than anybody would have wanted to. And, but it's, it's a lesson learned on, you know, what, what, you know, real estate transactions can look like when they go south, unfortunately, with developers as, as, as can happen, so.
Okay. Well, I appreciate it. You could feel the frustration in, in the residents and, you know, our hearts go out to them for the situation. But it is, the neighborhood looks great now and it's nice that it's, it's finally finished. It just seems like it was quite a hardship to get there. So I just want to say I appreciate all the work that you and staff have done to, to get us to where we are now.
Anything else from anyone? Just note, I do know that, that case was referred to the, the state through the help of our representative, Mr. Hewitt. So there has been involvement at that, but this builder in particular had a fair amount of projects out there. So being able to get anything or any recovery seemed pretty unlikely. So that's unfortunate.
Yeah.
All right, with that, that'll complete response to public comment number four. We'll move forward to item number five, public comment. Anyone wishing to come before council on subjects not a part of the meeting agenda may do so at this time. You may step forward, state your name and address and your comment for council.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name is Rob Jacobson. I live at 14230 Audubon Way. That's in the Bloomfield neighborhood. And I'm talking today in response to the digging that was happening in our neighborhoods with fiber, I'm assuming fiber cable. I say assuming because we received no communication from the city or from any of the builder or companies about what was happening, or when it was happening, or how it was happening. To be fair, I'm in favor of progress and I'm, I appreciate competition, especially in the areas of telecommunication and choices within that. But I've been very disappointed with how the progress, or how the projects have occurred so far. For example, in late August or early September, workers came out into my neighborhood and marked the yards and they didn't have any identification or communication. There weren't any, there weren't any vehicles that said what the company was, or if it was part of the city. Not a super big deal, but worth noting. And then in early September, a company called W, D-U-B-Y-A Underground, because that was what their truck said, and it had a license and a number, came to dig. And they, when they came through the area, they, not trying to complain, they made holes bigger than they needed to. They cut through my neighbor's irrigation line. They left a hole in my, in my particular yard, which was mostly, but not exclusively in the easements area, according to the code. It was two feet wide by three feet long by two feet deep. And they left that like overnight. So they did put some lime green cones around it, but clearly, in my opinion, a safety hazard. When they did come back either that day or the next day or the following day, they did put the, install the box and the little piece that comes up. But then around it and many of the places that they had dug where they didn't need to, they just filled it in with sand. As I went through the neighborhood, all of the not, mostly nice yards were replaced with sand. And then again, there was no communication when I tried to find, I'm fairly decent on the internet, I tried to find contact information for W Underground. There was none. There's no address. There's a, there's a, there's no phone number. There's no website. There is an address in St. Paul, but it goes to a, an industrial building. So there's no way to figure out that or ask any questions about that. They did come in just this week, a month later, and put a very small amount of dirt and some seed down, but they didn't take any of the sand. So it won't look like it did before they came in. So my questions are, is, is the city required to give notice or share communication with residents about work being done in a neighborhood or with easements? And if, if so, then why wasn't there any? And if, if there's not required, should the city ask companies or require companies who will be digging through their residential areas to give notice to the residents about what's happening or when it's happening? Should the city also be, should the city also require companies like W International, for example, or W Underground to have contact information, I would say even if it's not on their trucks, with the city in case there's a problem so that residents can contact these companies if there's a case like my neighbor's irrigation line? So I don't know if you're supposed to respond now, or if you have any clarifications to my question, to my comments and questions?
Yeah, typically we respond within a week. I would look to staff if there's any generic answers that they can provide at the moment, or maybe even some specifics to this one, or maybe a follow-up in a week or two weeks.
Yeah, I, I can take that one, Mayor. Probably more from a general sense for now, just because I don't know all the details or the provider that's working in the area. I've got an idea of who it could be, but we'd have to look into what right-of-way permits have been filed associated with the work. Your frustration has been one we've heard elsewhere in town, unfortunately, and specifically disappointing for us because when these entities did come to us to talk about their deployment and what they were looking to do throughout the city, we were stressing the need for proactive communication and laid out those expectations of mailings and door hangers and signs. And they, they had provided copies of those sorts of examples to us and said that they were doing this. But yet, your experience obviously was different. We know others have had that too. So we have had a number of, of calls coming to us about these sorts of things over the last several weeks. That, the, I guess the good news on this is that we're, we're lighting the fire, or we have been lighting the fire under these companies to shore up their communications efforts. They do have general contact numbers for residents to connect with them and email addresses, and in some cases a webpage all about the work that they're doing, which was supposed to be featured in the proactive communications. But if nobody receives that, then they wouldn't be aware of it. So I'll, I'll grab your address from your testimony earlier and we can look into that starting tomorrow morning and circle back with you if you like.
No, thank you. I appreciate that. So does the city have that contact information for in particular this company that I'm talking about?
We, we would, yep.
So if I was to come back when, during business hours, I could find that out?
Absolutely, yep.
So Nick, did we, did we contract directly with them, or were they a subcontract of our contractor?
Great question, Councilmember. This isn't a city contracted activity at all. This is private enterprise working under a permit in the city's right-of-way. So there is space set aside alongside roads and backyards and other areas to allow corridors for these sorts of things to be installed. So essentially, they, they would have the right to do it, but it doesn't mean that they go in blindly without saying anything to the, and, and being a good neighbor.
Yep.
Is really what it's all about. So there's, there's some administrative things that the city does to review their plans and ensure that they're going to go about their work in a, in a space that doesn't conflict with other interests the city might have, utilities, those sorts of things. But we go through a permit issuance process before that, and part of that discussion was not only the technical elements, but the communications part of it too, was all contained within those conversations. So it's really, like I say, disappointing to see that their lack of follow-through is turning into experiences like you had, sir.
And also just curious, like do we, is, is our, does our process include anything, like a quality review of, of the, of the, the company who's asking for the permit? I mean, do we do, is there anything, is that part of our process at all?
There's little that we can do on that front. We, we, we have requirements for timely restoration and putting back together the surface in at least as good as condition as they found it, including repairs of irrigation systems they might hit or other things that they damaged.
But no, no, no due deal.
Since they're not a, a contractor working for
Yep.
the city per se, that, there's limitations on, on what we're able to, we can't dictate who these utility providers utilize to install their facilities.
Yep, yep, yep. Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Could I just follow up quickly with that? I, I do have pictures if it would be helpful. I, I realize that it sounds like the telecommunications companies come to the city, the city then, or the telecommunications contract then subcontract out that work. So if it's helpful, I, I'd be happy to provide that. I do have one follow-up that's still within the same realm. Okay. It's, I've heard from a couple of my neighbors that there's another company that's coming in just four weeks after a company has come in to dig, and I think it's for the same work. And so I'm just curious on, and if I'm being naive, why couldn't the city reach out to these, if companies come forward, it seems to me that if there's just one round of digging and then all the companies could either bid or get in on the one digging, then the process would go a little bit smoother for residents?
Tell me if I'm correct on this, but local governments are severely restricted. It's called preemption by, in this case, I think it's federal, maybe state, on how much we can actually do against them. I mean, we're allowed to permit them, but there's not really a, a tool to enforce or to require certain conditions. And that's where I think residents are seeing this. So even the coordination of digging at the same time would be outside of our purview if, if I'm correct on that.
Mayor, I, I think you're on the right track there where there are federal regulations from the FCC on telecommunications infrastructure. I don't know that the same sort of restrictions apply to other types of private utilities, gas, electricity. Those, those entities typically have franchise agreements where they define their territory within a community, so to speak, and there's, there's an agreement that's laid out. Telecom is a little different that way, particularly fiber optics. And, and what it comes down to is they're competitors and they're both, or however many there would be are vying for customers. And again, if the, there's space allowed for these conduits and corridors, things to be installed, they're able to use them, even if that may be at offset times where they're, they're not talking to each other about who's going where. It, it's really probably trade secret type of information and, and their plans are, are what they develop on their own without, they're not going to cross-talk and make deals to say, I'm going to go here if you go there. I don't think that's happening.
I appreciate that feedback, and it might be a little naive. So thank you for your
Yep.
time, listening, attention, and responses. Appreciate it, Mayor and Council.
You'll, you'll be back following up.
Yeah, I would just recommend if you call our main public works number tomorrow, we can connect you with some of those additional communications resources for those companies once we learn who it is.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to come before council for public comment? Seeing none at this time, I'll consider a public comment closed. Completing item five, we'll move on to consent agenda. This evening's we have bill listings, minutes from the October 1st, regular and work session proceedings, Meadow Ridge Fourth Edition accepting public improvements, donation acceptance from the American Legion for the Fire Department Open House that was worth $1,000. It was a, a great event on this past Sunday. Requested by Furlong, excavating for renewal of its small-scale mineral extraction permit for 2025. Project Falcon Environmental Investigation Grant application requesting a letter of support. Conditional use permit request by Hussein Abdulahi for a live, for a live work dwelling in the MX-1 downtown mixed-use district. Request by Dakota Aggregates for its amendment to its large-scale mineral extraction permits. Let's see, appointment for additional election judges for 2024. I guess that's five additional ones. SKB Rosemount Second Edition Final Plat and Lifetime Facility Change Order Number 11. With that, would council, anyone wish to pull any for further discussion or comment?
Like to pull items G and I.
G and I are pulled. Anything else?
L.
L. All right. So with the consent agenda, with items A through L, G, I, and L removed for further discussion, would anyone like to move that approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We got a motion by Climpel, second by Tyson. Roll, please.
Essler?
Aye.
Climpel?
Aye.
Weisensel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Fresky?
Aye.
This is 5-0. Take the first one up, 6G.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I pulled this one, the Project Falcon Environmental Investigation Grant Application. This is kind of a project at a high level that we've spoken about at our Public Port Authority meetings, but thought it might be a, a new term to our residents here in the capacity of a city council meeting. So just wondering if you could share just some background of Project Falcon as we know it today?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, members of the council. I could take a stab at that, and then Mr. Keenberger can help if, if needed as well. As you mentioned, Ms. Climpel, Project Falcon has been discussed at the Port Authority meeting and in some of the project update documentation as the Port Authority, as our economic development arm, has been tracking this project going forward. This is a development project south of the, what used to be called Project Bigfoot, which we now know to be a metadata center, a project south of there, a research and testing facility. a research and testing facility being considered in, in collaboration with the University of Minnesota and some of the research and testing that the University of Minnesota does. So the parcel just directly south of, of Meta is generally speaking where they, they appear to be looking along Blaine Avenue. And what this would do then is shows the city's support of their application to the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development to receive a brownfield investigation grant. So to understand what the environmental situation may be at a more deep level on that parcel, to then allow them to get some funding to investigate that, to then lead to a cleanup if they were to consider a development on that, on that parcel. So no project applied for, no project in front of the city, but there certainly is, we know, a project called Project Falcon looking in that area. And that's just a general description of what that, what that would be. So hopefully that, that helps a little bit and can expand on that if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any questions or comments from the rest of council? If not, would you like to move the recommended action?
I'll move to approve the attached resolutions related to the deed application for Project Falcon.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Climpel, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Climpel?
Aye.
Weizenzel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
This is 5-0. We'll move on to six I, Dakota Aggregates.
Yep. And Mr. Mayor, I, I pulled this one. I did watch the planning commission discussion of this particular item as the Dakota aggregates mining moves a little further north and starts to get a little closer, I think, to the Bloomfield neighborhood, or if I recall correctly. And I just wanted to point out some of the discussion that the planning commission had towards the end of their meeting about if noise were an issue. I know we heard that, you know, there will be no beeping of reversing trucks and things like that, but what the resident remediation would be if there were to be issues of that nature that I know that kind of came up at that particular meeting. And just wanted to reiterate what residents have at their disposal should anything arise.
Yep. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Climpel can certainly speak to that. I know we do have the applicants here with us this evening if, if you would like to call them up to address that. But typically from staff's perspective and as was noted during the planning commission meeting, that if there are complaints about noise from any of our gravel or mining operations, that they should call the, the police to not report an emergency per se, but so that it can be logged as an instance. So one thing that we do when the city conducts its annual or biannual renewal of these permits is that we do check with our police department to see if and how many complaints have been logged during that previous cycle's operations. So then that can be taken into consideration for future approvals. So typically what we hear, and we do have, I want to say it's either eight or nine, and I may be off by one or two there, operations within our city, almost every time it is, there have been zero complaints. But we do want to make sure that, that there, if there is one, that the resident is able to, and we would again encourage them to call 911 to report that through our police department so that that can be noted.
I was just going to follow. Well, you know, one of the things I, I watched the planning council meet, planning commission meet, and one of the things that I liked, and I think I heard is that as they move closer towards residential with some of the mining of aggregate, that they're using all conveyor belts, so eliminating the, the backing up of the trucks, the, the slamming of the back gates of the, of the dump trucks. So I, I guess that really kind of resonated with me. So if people don't see that, maybe they're seeing this, that there's a lot of precautions that they can do and have done anytime they get closer to residential. So I guess that was something that I thought was very good to hear. So appreciate that.
I'll also give the applicant, or the, I guess, yeah, the applicant an option if they wish to come forward, state any things regarding noise abatement or operations.
Matt Melling, I'm the operations manager for Dakota Aggregates, 423 Ramsey Carver, Minnesota. As we get closer north towards residence two, we will be 50 feet below the ground. So we'll be at the lowest point. So we will have a 50-foot face in front of us. So the noise will be kept low. This, when we're mining up there also will be conjunction with school project going on. So you'll hear actually probably a lot more noise from the school project, a lot more dust coming from the school project than you actually see from us being 20 feet below the face. So.
Yeah, it's a good point.
Yep, thank you.
Yep.
I think the idea that you're 50 feet down below, just the regular grade, not even a berm, you're down farther is, is very relevant. So thank you.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
All right. With that, would someone like to move the motion recommended action?
I'll move to approve an amendment to Dakota Aggregates 2024 Large-Scale Mineral Extraction Annual Operating Permit Agreement.
Second.
Motion by Climpel, second by Essler. Roll, please.
Weizenzel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Climpel?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Climpel?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Climpel?
Aye.
Completes six I, 5-0. Move on to the last one, six L, Lifetime Facility Change Order.
Yeah, I guess my, my question here was just, I know that Dan isn't here tonight, but I just wanted to bring this up and, and I, I think Brett's in the room, but I just wanted, there's so much new development and it looks almost finished on the outside and I know it's not, you know, I know there's a lot that has to be done inside, but there's so many people talking about it and, and I know they're seeing the advertisements. I was just going to see if there's an opportunity that we could ask a few questions if you're available or?
Since you're here.
Yeah, since you're here. Yeah. Yeah. Well, I know you live here too, so that, that helps.
Do you want me to say my address?
Yeah, you're naming the address.
Brent Marlowe, Director of Construction at Lifetime Property Development, address 13987 Abbey Field Avenue, Rosemount, Minnesota.
Awesome. Yeah. So I was just going to like, I don't know, is there a quick update or just, how's it going?
So the, the project is going really well. We're in the finishes stage. We actually, as I was telling you and Logan before, and Logan, I shared the email link with you. This morning on WCCO morning, we had two instructors, fitness instructors out there. One of them's the lead studio, doing some workout for, they called it spook. I don't know. I, that's a different side of the business.
You're, you're not in the.
No, you are. But I, but, so they, they were working out, but one was lead general and then they advertised the Rosemount facility with the fly-through. So it was just showing what, what the club will look like and everything. Quick update, pool deck is nearing completion. So pools are done, they're plastered, we have water and you wonder why we have water. We have to cure out the plaster for 30 days. So we will drain those down. The bistro on the outside is finishing up. We'll craft a heat and cover just because that was a late add and we got some, some tile work that has to be done and just some finish work that requires heat. The inside, we actually had our NCO team, our new club operations openings team, walk the project yesterday. So 20 individuals walked the project. They like to go in and this one is the first of its kind prototype, the E-Box. We have a few rolling out, just not this far into construction. So with this being a brand-new prototype, they always like to walk the site, see if there's any tweaks that need to be made before opening. So they, they put together a list of items that they were looking for. Nothing major. It's add a TV here or there, or reposition a few things. And then we'll analyze that to see if it has any impact on schedule. And then we'll go, go from there, implement them as needed. We're actually looking to have the project for construction at a whole substantially complete in early November. And then we have testing and balancing, commissioning, pre-functional testing, move-in, all that to occur during that month of, in punch list, month of November, early December, and then looking to have our new club openings team come mid-December to, there's a week worth of stocking with furnishings, artificial plants, all of that. So nearing, nearing completion. I would recommend looking at that fly-through that was on WCCO. Last week we were out there, if you, if you drove by, you notice the trailer's gone, the, the restroom building. So we had to pull all that to get our, our wear course of asphalt before the asphalt plants shut down for the season. And so the site is really coming together. The pavers with the clover, that'll start to go in here soon as well. So.
Notice that, the change order.
Yeah, the final touches are coming together and everybody's excited for it to come. And I did get an answer.
Okay, I was just going to, I was just going to let you, because one of the excitements about not only that building is the building that's going to be happening around it. So yeah, sorry if you could, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I did, did reach out to Aaron Kohler, our, our Vice President of Property Development. He leads, leads the team of real estate development, architecture and construction. And we did officially sign the agreement for, for the copper pint. So that's executed and, and good to go.
That's great. I appreciate it.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you for stepping in. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Any other questions from council members?
Well, Brett's up there. Any questions on the change order or other?
Well, I have another, and I, I know this isn't your side of the business, but the question I get most frequently is when will pricing be released?
It should be very soon. I know that we have like online pre-sale and everything. I can talk to, every, every week we have a new club, NCO meeting outside of our construction meeting. So I know they're honing in on it. It should be.
I know there was a teaser text that went out.
Was it a teaser email? Yep.
An email to the waitlist. Yep.
Okay.
But it didn't have any numbers.
No numbers. All right. Well, I can, I can press them that, that the city council and the city residents are eager to get, gain that knowledge. So.
Because of the excitement, yeah.
Right.
Awesome.
Great.
Other questions, specifically anything on the change order, which is the item before us? All right, seeing none then. With that, would you like to move the recommended action then?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve change order number 11 for the lifetime facility as listed in the attached document as PCO number 47 through 59.
I'll second.
Got a motion by Tyson, second by Freski. Roll, please.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Climpel?
Aye.
Weizenzel?
Aye.
And that completes six L with a 5-0 vote and completes this consent agenda. Next item up is our public hearings, 7A, Certification of Delinquent Municipal Services to 2025 Property Taxes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The city experiences delinquent accounts similar to other businesses. We do not utilize collection agencies and we don't typically shut off services. We are able to certify those delinquent amounts to the county to add perdition onto the owner's property taxes. So notices were mailed to those with delinquent utility invoices that were delinquent as of July 15th, and those included some delinquent mowing and code violation invoices. We had about three there on the end of the list. They were told that they could avoid certification if they paid in full by September 26th and that there was a public hearing being held this evening for it. At the time of the notice, there were 1,346 utility accounts that were delinquent for $427,494. And as of this evening, we've had a few payments. We will be certifying 477 accounts for $277,240 is what we are down to. So we received about $150,000 in payments. To compare that to historical numbers, in 2023, we had 892 accounts for $276,022. We had 785 accounts with $228,000. So one thing with that, too, the account numbers seem higher in previous years. We used to certify twice a year in April and October. We are not doing that any longer because it still ends up on the same tax statement. So if we did April 24 and October 24, it's still going to be on your 25 payable taxes. So a lot of people, it's the same people that are delinquent. So some of those are duplicate numbers. So this creates a lag for the city's cash flow, can negatively impact a little bit, can pay our bills, not an issue. But there is a lag in the payment. Some people haven't paid at all in the last year. So they do have an opportunity to pay ahead if they'd like to. We do take credits on account, but you know, unfortunately, we don't always have that. So this evening, what we are asking is to hold the public hearing, hear from anybody who may be here, wish to speak, and after that, adopt the attached resolution certifying them to the 25 taxes.
Could you repeat the updated numbers, accounts and total amount?
Absolutely. It is 477 accounts, $277,240.
All right. So this is a public hearing. We will open up the floor as before. Anyone wishing to speak before council on this matter may do so. Please come forward, state your name and address and your comment, question. Floor is open. Anyone coming to the podium? Anyone to the podium? Seeing none at this time, we, I'll move to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Public hearing is closed and we need to take the action. Someone like to move the recommended action?
Yeah, I can move a motion to adopt the resolution certifying delinquent municipal services.
Second?
Second.
Have a motion in second. Motion by Tyson, second by Essler. Roll, please.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
Climpel?
Aye.
Weizenzel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Completes the certification 5-0. It was nice at least seeing the reduction of that amount of money in that short period of time. So appreciate that effort by your staff. And we'll move on to item nine, new business. Request before us from KJ Walk. And are we looking to Mr. Keenberger? Oh, it's open.
All right, Mr. Mayor and the council, we do have a major amendment request in front of the council today. So a little bit of a summary of that request. So KJ Walk, Inc. had requested a PUD final site and building plan and a major amendment to the Rosewood Commons Planning Development Agreement to construct two commercial buildings with outdoor dining areas and a drive-through facility on land located northwest of the quadrant of Business Parkway and County State Aid Highway 42. So a little bit of an overview, the planning commission did see these requests at the July 23rd planning commission meeting where they held a public hearing. They did end up voting to continue the item until the August 27th meeting so that the applicant could provide additional information and updated materials. Item was continued further at the August 27th meeting until the September 24th, 2024 planning commission meeting. At that meeting, the planning commission did vote to approve the PUD final site and building plan and did recommend the city council approve a major amendment to the Rosewood Commons PUD agreement, which that amendment allows for deviations from the code related to exterior, exterior materials, which I'll go over a little bit later on in this presentation. So a little overview of the site location. So like I had mentioned, it's in the northwest quadrant of Business Parkway and 42. So you can see it's highlighted. It is part of the Rosewood Commons second edition plat area.
Time out.
We don't have any signal.
Mr. Mayor, we're, I can tell there, the crew in the back is trying to get it to connect, but it seems that the technology is not connecting.
It's up. Room PC isn't connecting, so we can't see Julia's presentation at the moment. But we may have, with the Port Authority meeting changing the tech, we may have broken the connection a little bit tonight. So maybe if they can't fix it in the back, we might need to go verbal only here.
Yeah, which I can kind of describe that to.
We've got the council, the packet attachments as well, if you want to maybe talk through those, but yeah.
Well, I guess I'll just kind of go overview of what the site plan showed and everything. So the site area.
Are they able to use the, the table?
I don't know if Julie has it printed out.
I don't have it printed out.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
We have it in our packets though, right?
Yep. Yeah, yeah. She'll talk to the site plan for you.
Yep. So that as an attachment, so I'll kind of just go overview of that then. So the site area is about 1.72 acres in size and the current zoning is MX-2, highway mixed-use commercial PUD, and that comp plan, land use designation is CC Community Commercial. So each, each parcel contains one building. So the building on the western parcel contains a standalone restaurant with an outdoor patio area. And then the eastern parcel contains a multi-tenant commercial building, which is proposed to contain a fast food slash drive-through facility and then also an additional restaurant and then other commercial and retail space on that eastern parcel as well. So the outdoor patio areas are shown to be located directly south of the standalone restaurant on the western side and then also patio area on the north side of the fast food area on the eastern parcel. The drive-through facility is shown to be located on the east of the multi-tenant building directly west of Business Parkway. And then both buildings meet the required building setback regulations of the MX-2 zoning district and also meet the parking surface setback of 10 feet from a private road on that northern portion of the sites. Little overview of the access and parking. So vehicular access into the site will be made from the private road immediately north of site, which is called 149 Street West. The drive aisles that are shown off of 149 Street West will share access with the commercial development to the west of Also, the drive-through is shown to start at the southern of the multi-tenant building more closely to County State Aid Highway forty-two, and then flow north towards the main access into the site off one hundred and forty-ninth Street West. And then also on part of that, part of the staff report and also on this PowerPoint shows that the sites are meeting the total minimum parking requirements that were required. And then a little bit overview of the landscape plan, so that was required by the applicant to be updated, which they did. So the site does meet the requirement of forty-three trees and sixty-six foundation plannings. And also, they did update the type of trees on the eastern, on the eastern portion to help with screening of the drive-through area. So they did do that since the September twenty-fourth planning commission meeting, they did update that. And then also did want to reiterate that the developer and applicant has requested that the park dedication fees be collected at the time of the building permit, which that is fifteen thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. And then architectural elevation, so like I had mentioned, the zoning ordinance requires at least fifty percent of the building to be finished with brick or stone and no more than ten percent EFS. The applicant is requesting the ability to include up to eighteen point five percent EFS in exchange for including stone and brick beyond the required of the zoning ordinance. So the plan shows that eighty-one point eight percent of the nine glass areas are brick or stone on the eastern multi-tenant building, and then eighty point nine percent on the western restaurant building. But because of that, that is that need for that major amendment to the Rosewood Commons PUD agreement is to make that adjustment with the EFS percentage and the brick and stone. And then further on was just the architectural elevations that the applicant did submit, the three-D renderings. And then in front of the council today are two motions. First motion is to adopt a resolution approving a major amendment to the Rosewood Commons Planning Development Agreement. And then the second motion is to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute a major amendment to the Rosewood Commons Planning Development Agreement. I can take any questions the council may have, but I do know the applicant is in the audience as well if you have further questions for them.
Open up to council, any questions for staff?
I have a question for them.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Council?
Yeah, so, so it might, it might be for the applicant, if you can't answer this, but, so are we, so is the applicant building this just for, for spec? Or is there identified tenants that are already established for this, for these units?
Yeah, I'll definitely let the applicant speak to that a little more, but I did know that the applicant did speak that they did have a few users on that eastern tenant building, but I sure, I'm sure they can kind of elaborate more on what they have right now.
Okay. Yep, I'll reserve more questions, but that's one question.
I guess that's the big questions.
Okay.
The applicant would come forward, please? Good evening.
Yeah, good evening. I'm Warren Israelson, the owner of KJ Walk. Yeah, we do have two tenants that are interested in moving in. The north one with the drive-through would be a taco facility and restaurant, and the one next to it would be a pizza place.
In the same building?
Yeah, both of them on the eastern building. That's the one we would build first. At this time, we don't have anybody for the standalone restaurant. And then the southern part of the eastern building is still open. We anticipate some retail or office space or something.
So the, so on the east building, those two spots, if you've identified who the tenants are, I'm assuming they're, are they having some input on the, on the construction of the facility, or just, they're, they're just worried about the inside?
Yeah, they would just, we would just be working with them on the tenant improvements.
Tenant improvements on the inside?
Which would be the inside.
And then on, on the west restaurant, there isn't any identified restaurants. Are you planning to build that prior to knowing who the tenant would be, or what's, what's the plan on that?
Not, not the restaurant, not likely. We're gonna build the first building, and then we're gonna have our broker actively seek a restaurant user for the second building.
So in that case, there might be a possibility that there would be a revision to that structure, depending on who the tenant would be, right?
Yeah, we would like to leave that possibility open, yes.
Yeah, okay. And how does that, how does that work from a staff standpoint? If we approve the site plan the way it's designed today, and they find a tenant, he finds a tenant, and they come back and they make some, is that just a revision, or what's that process?
So if, you mean if there'd be like a different parking requirement, or?
Amendment to a different layout of the site.
Different layout, yep, different layout parking, yep.
Yep, so it would be, if it was like a change to the site plan, too? Because the site plan's approved through planning commission, so if there's a, an amendment or a major amendment to that, if it's significant enough, it would be a complete revision through the planning commission site plan approval process.
Okay.
If it's simply an amendment to the PUD, one of the actions that's before you tonight as a part of this, then it would be an amendment back before city council.
Yeah, okay. But right now, it sounds like you're in a position where the building on the east side is ready to, I mean, you're, you're in a position with the two tenants on the north side, where you're ready to start construction on the east side? On the east building?
Yeah, I mean, we likely probably won't start till spring at this point, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, it's just great to see it come to life. Great.
Yeah, I'm excited for it to finally start happening, and that whole stretch along forty-two.
Yeah.
I've been waiting a long time for this to happen.
We all have.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, looked for the recommended motion. Like to move the first one.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution approving a major amendment to the Rosewood Commons Planned Unit Development Agreement.
Second.
And a motion by Freski, second by Tyson. Roll, please.
Essler?
Aye.
Limpel?
Aye.
Weizenzel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Passes five-zero, and the second motion.
I'll move to authorize the mayor and the city clerk to execute a major amendment to the Rosewood Commons Planned Unit Development Agreement.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Limpel, second by Tyson. Roll, please.
Limpel?
Aye.
Weizenzel?
Aye.
Tyson?
Aye.
Freski?
Aye.
Essler?
Aye.
And that completes motion two, five-zero, and completes the action for our new business under nine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move on to section ten, city staff updates.
Thanks, members of the council. I think Chief Dulstrom has an update that he wanted to share with the council tonight.
Mayor members of the council, I just wanted to make a quick pitch again for the third annual Pink Patch Collector Show event this weekend. It's Saturday, I mentioned it a few weeks ago at the last council meeting, but nine to three at the community center, and it's gonna be in the main banquet hall. So Sergeant Jeremiah Simonsen, as you know, has been a leader across the state and the country in this effort. And while he's been going to a multi-month leadership school through the University of Northwestern in the last couple of months, he's still maintaining his active role in these events. So he just texted me that they have about forty different vendors that are gonna be there with different forms of law enforcement memorabilia, as well as the Pink Patch collections. So anybody from the public is welcome. It is five dollars to get in for guests. Some of the table, the vendors are paying ten dollars per table, but then again, all that money goes to the American Cancer Society for future research. So it's a fun event, family-friendly, a lot of different things to look at and collect. I believe council member Limpel, you were there last year?
Yeah, I attended last year, and A, I was surprised at the collector community. There's some pretty diehard people out there, and they're actually there kind of trading patches, and it was really fun to witness. B, a lot of the other local police departments are actually there selling some really amazing swag. I'm quite a collector of coffee mugs. I think I came home with about five.
Yep.
And then finally, though, I highly recommend stopping by and talking with Officer Simonsen. He's got some really amazing collector memorabilia and can give you a lot of the history of everything from the collector community, but also the history behind the badges and the patches and the license plates that he has. And so it's a really nice perspective on the history of law enforcement, not just in, like Rosemount and Dakota County, but the state of Minnesota as a whole. So very cool experience, I highly recommend it if you haven't been to it before. I would, I would suggest attending at least once.
I would just add that, I had the opportunity at the football game to, to sit down with Officer Simonsen and buy some patches, and I got a pink cap, believe it or not, Tassel cap. But what's really cool is to hear that he's gonna have some input on the, at the new PD station with some of this memorabilia to display this stuff in some of the cases. Can you speak more into that a little bit?
Yeah, no, that's correct. He's, he's our local historian, and he's just taking that on, on his own accord. Wasn't assigned, it's just something, he's a passion that he likes to do. Him and his family will actually take road trips where they will go and make an effort to stop at as many places as possible to, whether it's to collect more memorabilia or trade, and, and add to the, the history of our department into, into Rosemount. He recently recovered some, some badges from the Gopher Ordnance Works ammunition plant from the nineteen forties here in Rosemount, so from people that were actually on the site. So pretty cool stuff. He's got some ideas planned for our display cases, and he's been brought in on the front end, you know, well over a year ago to, to that, for that planning effort. So I hope he's ready, because we're, we're getting close to move-in day, so.
Awesome.
The last thing I would just say is, is you guys were aware of the intensive comprehensive police officer education and training program? We received that grant from the state to send three different candidates, and they are all in school. So our CSO, Chloe Von Banks, started the first of the, this month up in Alexandria, so she's up there till the end of February. And our other two candidates started yesterday at Hennepin Tech. So full swing, and we are looking forward to February and March to get them on staff.
Thank you.
And Mayor, City Clerk Fassbender would give a voting update if we could as well.
Certainly.
Yes, yes, happy to do so. So we have been in full force with voting since September twentieth with absentee voting. We've actually had absentee voting taking place here at City Hall, with in addition to that voters, if they want to receive a mail ballot, they can do that as well and turn it in here at City Hall. Starting this Friday, we have the next voting process, which is called direct balloting. So voters will have the opportunity to come here at City Hall, starting next Friday, or this Friday, excuse me, where they can enter their ballot directly into the tabulator. In addition to that, voters of course can still drop off ballots if they've received them in the mail. I encourage voters, if they are interested in doing the direct balloting process, we do have extended hours, too. Those hours can be found on our website. In addition, we have, in the recent newsletter, a lot of the information is located in there as well. Lot of extended hours, late hours, weekend hours, so there's definitely a lot of opportunity to get out there and vote. And then finally, I just encourage voters who are looking to vote on election day to make sure that they're checking out their polling location. If they haven't voted in a while, you know, location may have changed, so just be sure to check out the website for that. And of course, if there's any questions, certainly can call City Hall and we can address those.
Down to three weeks.
And counting, yes.
And counting. Any other staff updates?
No, thank you.
All right, that completes ten A. We'll move to ten B, upcoming community calendar. But before that, I'd like to give a shout-out here to council member Paul Tyson, who represented at the mayor challenge, the Kicks for Cure, and if you'd like to share your experience there?
Yeah, yeah, so the, the experience was, was great. Of course, I'm, I'm not the mayor, so I was filling in because you had, you had knee surgery. But it was at TCU, the Vikings Training Center. It was really, it was a beautiful day, it was gorgeous out there, and everybody was wearing pink, which is really cool. And in fact, John Althoff was wearing pink headband, pink leggings, he was, he was head to toe. He was pinked out. But the, yeah, the local mayors, and then Commissioner Drasty and, is it Atkins? Commissioner Joe Atkins was, was there as well. And yeah, it was great. I was able to have my wife there, who's a breast cancer survivor, so it really is kind of near and dear to my heart. Her and, and my mother actually both had breast cancer and are survivors, and so to be able to fill in was, was great. And I'm happy to say that with eighty-four percent, I was able to bring the trophy home. Yep, not a kicker in real life, but I'll take it. And yeah, we got eighty-four percent, we, we just barely beat Mayor Hoyt from Farmington.
All right.
And it was a good thing you did that when you were forty-nine, because today you're fifty.
Right, right, exactly.
Whoa.
So that, that keeps one trophy here, the kicking total, so what about the second one? So what can they do about the donations?
Yeah, so, so the second one is raising money for, for breast cancer. That's the whole point of this whole thing. So if you go to Real Men Wear Pink backslash Paul Tyson and donate, right now, we're leading that as well, as far as the highest donators for the, for the city of the mayor contest. But it goes till the end of October, so if, if you go to Real Men Wear Pink and look for my name, all of those contributions go to represent the city of Rosemont.
And certainly, take advantage of that. We got that trophy last year. A fair, a fair amount of money was donated for a great cause, and we look forward to keeping those trophies here for another year. So please reach out and send a donation in for that. Appreciate that. Thank you, Paul. The upcoming community calendar starts next Tuesday, October twenty-second, with the planning commission here in City Hall from six-thirty to seven-thirty. The youth commission on Wednesday, the twenty-third, from three forty-five to four forty-five at the Steeple Center. The aforementioned Halloween trail will be October twenty-sixth at, that's Saturday, September, or October twenty-sixth, from six to eight PM at Central Park. The next utility commission will be on, I want to say that's Monday. It's gonna be on Monday, October twenty-eighth, from five thirty to six thirty. After Halloween, we will have our pumpkin collection, which will run from November second to November third at Central Park. There'll be dumpsters out there for you to throw your pumpkins in. And the next city work session will be November fourth, five to six PM, and city council from November fourth on seven to eight PM. Again, November fourth is on Monday, voting is on Tuesday, the fifth, so appreciate people coming out and voting.
May I interject one thing?
Yes.
I think we all want to thank all the members of the community who attended Oktoberfest this past weekend. It was at Central Park, we had our two local breweries, North Twenty and Omni were there. We had a polka band, which was fantastic, that was one of my favorite features, the fire, the fire pits, you name it, but.
Axe throwing.
Axe throwing in back, I didn't try that. That's a good thing, and I just thought it was an amazing event. I, I really thought, it seemed like a successful first, first foray into our own local Oktoberfest, and really just thankful for all the members of the community who showed up.
Absolutely.
And there were schnitzel there, too.